Okay, Manistee City Council Work Session for Tuesday, November 28, 2017 at 7:00 PM is now called to order. Uh, work session items.
I would like to add an item for discussion, and that is concerning my appointment to the AES Board, and I'd like to bring you up to speed with some of the decisions that have been made, so that you're fully apprised of the direction they're going.
Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Taylor? Adding something to the agenda, do we need to vote on that?
For amending an agenda, we do. I don't know where your opinion is.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to add an agenda item, discussion of Councilmember Beaton's appointment to AES Board. I have a second by Mayor Potem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
We're not going to vote on this, are we?
Yes.
We can't, can we?
No, you can't vote on what's going to be discussed. I think they're asking to vote on addition to the agenda.
Amending the agenda.
Okay, that's all I want to know. All right.
Please take a roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yep.
Councilmember Krabowski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hunter?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, work session items. We have a discussion of recycling program, discussion on sidewalk ordinance program, discussion on medical marijuana ordinance, discussion on sale of city property policy, a discussion on riverfront leases, and we will add a discussion of the AES appointment. Public comments on work session related item. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on work session related items. If you would please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on agenda-related items? If not, we'll proceed to the first item. Discussion on the recycling program, Public Works Director.
Good evening. Council asked us to explore and get some cost to, for different options on our recycling program. So tonight, Matt Byaletti from Republic Services is going to walk through a PowerPoint, talk through kind of where things are at, what some of the options are, what those costs could be, and then we'll be able to answer any questions as we go along through the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you much for having me. How are we tonight?
Good.
Fantastic. So about two months ago now, Thad and Jeff came to me and asked to talk a little bit about where we were in terms of recycle program, what some potential options were for discussion. So I'd kind of like to start with where the city is today on curbside, move into your solid waste, and quickly bring you through the options. So today, there is a curbside program available to residents. It's an optional program. Residents pay $6.88 for that program if they so choose, as in every other week collection. And there's about 100 residents participating in that program today. The second availability is the drop-off site. The drop-off site was relocated in 2015. It is an enterprise budget amount, currently at a $40,000 increment. There is a budget increase that's been presented to the city manager to talk about the fiber as those markets have changed, and there was a contract error that will increase that budget to 53 in 2018. So there's a $12,500 lift in that budget that will come before you at one of your next two council meetings as an amendment to look at with some further explanation, but it's something we've been talking about for about 90 days now. So it's, some of you might be aware of it, some of you might not. That program has seen some changes as it relates to the community. Recently, the Manistee Township program ceased. Other residents from around the county also have been noticed utilizing the city site. So there is some influx of residents from outside of the core city that are using that. City of Manistee, or the County of Manistee program, Jeff can talk to it a little bit more, has seen some substantial increases in the last five years, and they're currently working on how to continue to fund that program and what those sites are going to look like. So that's a little bit of a state of flux there in those programs, and as you see in the Manistee Township, what occurred there. Currently, the city trash program is based on a three-module program. There's $4.80 in between each module. That's an important note that we'll come back to a little bit later. So the difference between a tidy tote and a regular service is $4.80. The difference between a regular service and the mini-service is $4.80. It's a tiered structured program, which is known in the solid waste industry as a pay-as-you-throw program. So it kind of gets us to where you asked. The council asked us to look at what a potential curbside program would look like in relation to what was presented at the last contract renewal. So Republic Services again is presenting a 96-gallon cart program. It's an every-other-week collection. The rate for that program would be $4.25 per residential home per month. The proposal would require an additional five-year term extension to cover the capital costs, be able to explore those out. The proposal would require an increased annual rate adjustment from 2% to 4%. The reason for that rate adjustment is the 2% or the CPI, Consumer Price Index, ratio doesn't support where we're at in terms of employee training and truck costs. In the last five years, truck costs have gone up about $150,000. Employee costs for insurance, as you guys know, running the municipal programs is continuing to increase every year. We try very hard to keep our guys safe and on the street and do good service for them, and that sometimes needs to be adjusted. So if you look at that second bullet point there, if you were to reallocate the funds out of the enterprise fund from the drop-off to offset some of the costs of the curbside, you could basically reduce that cost by a buck oh nine at the current budget of 40. If you look at that budget increase for 2018, you'd be looking at $52,000, so you're $1.41, bringing that rate to either $3.16 a home or $2.84 a home, depending on how you wanted to reallocate those enterprise funds. Every home would have the opportunity to reduce their level of trash. Again, that 4.80 increment that we talked about before on the pay-as-you-throw, so a resident who had a tidy tote, if recycling was available to their home in the carted program like we're discussing today, would have the option to reduce their need for trash, and therefore could level down. If they leveled down, they'd actually net out $1.64 savings per home even after getting their recycle cart. Does that make sense? I seem like I'm talking a lot, not asking many questions.
Well, you're talking about going from like a three bags to two bags, that type of thing.
Correct. Yep. Yep. The city refuse program is also billed to the municipality as a bulk number and a tonnage number. In the recycling program, if you were to implement a curbside program, you could guess an estimate about 200 tons coming off that tonnage fee that the city's currently paying. So there's an additional savings there. Any questions on those numbers?
You know, one of the things I asked Mr. Taylor the other morning was, as in understanding we've got three different rates for refuse collection.
Mm-hmm.
The 4.80, the 9.60, the 14.40, and I do the tidy tote we have ever since we've been here.
Mm-hmm.
I put that out about once every 90 days, and other than that, I put one bag of trash out in front of the house. But I noted the other morning when I was coming back from the recycle center, a tidy tote with a big cardboard box and two bags of trash set right beside that. And my question to Mr. Taylor when we were having coffee was, geez, you know, is there any guide or anything if someone's paying for two bags and they're putting six bags out, they're getting six bags picked up anyhow, aren't they?
So the mini-service, as it's indicated in the city, there is a list that the driver has that tells them which service level a particular home has. You know, as the drivers do the route, they're very familiar with it, and, you know, they do reference that list periodically, but for the most part, they know who's on which program. You know, and occasionally they'll let someone slide, especially around the holidays, but, you know, other than that, they're pretty adequate about it, and they do have enforcement tags that they can leave behind if there is a problem.
You don't happen to have the numbers of the level of the different services?
I do not. I did not bring that information with me. I apologize.
I would think that would be interesting to note, is to see how many tidy totes we have and how many regular service and how many mini-service, because that could give us a potential indication of how many people might opt to downsize and go to recycling.
Yep. So a note to make in this program is we talk about the current programs today versus a future program. In a curbside recycling program like we're talking about today, this is an all implementation program, which means every home would get a cart. They would have the option to opt out of that cart, but they would not opt out of that fee, because the fee pays across the entire program. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you look at, the recycle partnership put out documentation and data as it relates to what an average home looks like when you talk about cart recycling. Average cart in the United States is about 400 to 450 pounds per home. On an every-other-week schedule, that's 15 pounds, which is very easy to accomplish if you think about what you recycle in today's world. So that 450 pounds gets you your savings on that tonnage number that we talked about earlier. They cite in this particular document, "That Much More Better Isn't My Bad English," by the way, that's their tagline, so please don't blame me for that. Kind of like that Little Caesar's, "Best Pizza Ever," right? The curbside totes have a larger capacity level, added convenience level, easy transport to the curb, you know, covered room, large bulky materials fit into them well. Typically, in a carted program like this, cardboard is placed alongside of it if a resident wants, has large cardboard, moving boxes, shipping boxes, Amazon boxes, so that those don't have to take up the cart room itself. So the carts are very popular, and that's what most of the new programs are going to. You know, cart cost versus bin cart. We transitioned the city a year and a half ago to carts. You know, a cart cost is around, just shy of $60, where a bin cost is about $8. So the carts cost a lot more. They have a 10-year depreciation level on them, though, so at the end of 10 years, they're at the end of their useful life. Recycling carts tend to last a little longer, but the program that's being implemented, if you were to go that route, those carts would be owned by Republic, so therefore they'd be managed by Republic, and there'd be no additional cost to the city for those carts, other than what's worked into the per-price per the home. Mr. Taylor was very specific that we needed to address business use for you guys, make sure that we had some information on that for you. So as we sat down, we also indicated that there would be all of the businesses that are currently participating in the millage would have the availability to have one cart per address. They'd be at the same rate as the residential program. They could have additional carts if they so chose. If you were to use the enterprise funds to supplement it down to that $3.16 that we talk about there, I would suggest that you use the additional carts that they order at the full rate at 4.25, just so you're not using additional enterprise funds to subsidize those additional carts. The Catholic school charity PCA cardboard program would still stay intact, so the way that we're doing cardboard downtown would still be the same way for the most part in this program as being presented today. Getting back to the fundings and the fees, so as you've asked for it, again, just kind of a quick recap, all homes would have a 96-gallon cart. We're anticipating 70% would put them out on an every-other-week basis. Typical resident recycles between 300 and 400 pounds. The resident could reduce their trash level at that $4.80 set increment, which would be a net $1.84 savings if they so choose to do that. The city of Manistee would be example here in this program for sustainability in the surrounding communities. There's no one else doing carts in Mason or Manistee Counties right now, so that would be a nice feather in the cap. The anticipated cost for the recycle drop-off site, as we talked about before, are going to go up 12.5 for next year. So that's a .34 per-home increase in the enterprise fund, which will have to be looked at either as a rate or other adjustment. The current recycling drop-off would be eliminated, would be removing that $40,000 and putting that back in the enterprise fund to draw down on the 4.25 cost. Again, that 4.25 minus the enterprise works out to be 3.16. We're guessing that the tonnage cost relief in the way that the city is billed would be somewhere between 12.5 and 15,000 annually. That would still maintain in the enterprise fund, and you could use those in different ways, either drawing down the residential rate or using it to offset some of that 2% to 4% PI increase, price increase change. There's also an additional option that's out in the marketplace right now for the DEQ is offering cart grants. If we applied for one of the cart grants and the city was approved for it, it could draw down that price somewhere between 25 cents and 75 cents, depending on how that grant actually got applied. So there is an additional drawdown that we could possibly look at. If we chose to go for the DEQ grant, it would give you a July implementation date. If you chose not to go for the DEQ grant, it would give you an April implementation date. The DEQ grant would require you to enter into a 10-year term on your recycling, because you have to fully vet out the carts, and the cart ownership would actually be allotted to the city to own at the end if they so chose. So there's some fine words in that DEQ document grant application, as they always are. Any questions, kind of as the recap of the funding and the fees?
Was this have any impact on our once-a-month bulk recycle item?
It would not.
That would still remain?
That would still remain, yes, sir. Yep, so if you were to, you know, at the will of the council, if you were to choose to go down this path, you would actually, you have two decisions here. First decision is, yes, we want to move down this path, and the second decision is, yes, we want to close the recycle drop-off and use those funds to offset this. Without those funds, or without closing the drop-off, you're kind of double-dipping it. You know, there's no need to have both. It's kind of a redundant thing. But if that's something that you would like to look for at the will of the council, we can have set documentation in front of you that's been reviewed by your legal counsel by the 19th meeting to get you a little more concrete.
I think, you know, I think there's a 2008 sort of citizen survey that I've reviewed. In that survey, they talked about recycling and other services in the city. Over 70% of the citizens at that point in time were in favor of recycling. An even higher percent was interested in recycling if they could have curbside recycling service without an increase in cost, if it was contained within the same cost that they were paying for refuse at the current time. You know, if we have the option to step down a level for people that have a tidy tote or the four, the three-plus bags of trash, if there's going to be a reduction and people can actually save more than the added cost of recycling, I think that would in general be favorably received. It was about 9% that indicated no willingness whatsoever to recycle in that survey. So I think it's interesting, you know, it may resolve an issue we have in illegal dumping and dumping of inappropriate items, but then you're going to be on the hook for people that put inappropriate items in a recycle bin, and you haul them out to the recycle center or wherever and find items that shouldn't be there. So is there a penalty in that?
So in this type of a recycle program, it's a lot easier to educate, because it's per home, and Mr. Taylor and I were talking about that earlier today. The fact that, you know, if a resident, for example, is hiding trash underneath their recycling, when they dump that out, if they see those bags, they can tag that, and the next time be more observant when they get to that cart. They can redline that cart, and then we'd have a campaign that would go to that resident. You know, it's really, it's a three or four-strike ultimately at the discretion of the city manager to pull a cart from a resident if they're abusing it, and then we'd have some sort of a redemption ability for them to get that cart back. You know, maybe by signing a recycling pledge or something like that, that indicates the items that are allowed in there and having them do that written communication to it. But definitely it would require additional education on our behalf, but it's, again, something that we can do per home versus trying to do a community-wide education when you don't know if it's even someone in the community that's dropping it at the drop So based on that survey and your comments, it sounds like that is something, you know, for the greater good of the community that shows favor in that survey.
I'm in favor, but, you know, we need a consensus of council members that would agree that this is probably an appropriate direction to take, so.
I think the curbside will be, people are more willing to recycle. I think it would, I think our community should promote recycling, and I'm in favor of it.
When you talk about per home.
Mm-hmm.
Area I am in, I own, I own some property in an area that, there's a house, there's two lots, and the lots are not divided, but I still pay for garbage and water and sewer on that lot, even though I don't have anything there.
You're paying the millage, or you're paying the tote price? You're paying the millage number?
Paying the millage, right, yeah, okay.
Right, so there's two different fees.
Is this per piece of property, or is this just per resident?
This is per dwelling.
Per dwelling.
Yep. So this would come out on your fee structure, very similar to your three-tier trash structure. So if you're not paying the three-tier trash structure, trash structure on that property, you wouldn't pay for the recycle tote for that property either.
I just think education would also be important, that people can understand how they can reduce their bill and make it pretty much null and void. I think that would be a very important part of the process.
I thought it would be important to know how many people are at what level, because then you could pretty much judge. I mean, if someone's at the regular level and could downsize to the mini level, they'd basically be recycling for the same cost, or actually a little less cost than what they're paying right now. It'd be the same situation for me to downsize from a tote to a regular, or I could actually go to a mini and save a lot of money. Now, I look at the business option, and I think the restriction that we have with businesses, a lot of businesses don't have a place to put a tote. You hear that from a number of them. A number of them will take their cardboard, or a Catholic pastor comes around and picks their cardboard up for them on any given day. So, you know, it's nice to include a business option, but I could see some difficulty. We've got one of those situations right now where someone has been locked out of a place where they had a bin before, and now we're in a workaround situation. So, you know, that would be something that would have to be resolved for the business entities.
Yep. So, I mean, downtown presents its own challenges, and so we'd have to work with the businesses to, you know, locate those carts in areas that were, you know, good for them. The nice part about a 96-gallon cart is if, you know, you're using a storeroom and you're using tin and paper and plastic, and you're presenting recycling in the proper way, empty, clean, dry, you can actually store that tote in the storage room and wheel it out just on the collection day.
I've actually had people ask me about the possibility of recycle bins downtown on River Street, for people to put their paper, people to put their plastic, or, you know, or whatever in the past, and they've always been told that's not really practical, and more labor involved with that than what it would be of value.
You're talking on the resident on the street side, as a shopper having somewhere to put their paper and items like that, next to the street baskets, is what you're speaking of?
Okay.
That's something, when you go to a curbside program, you can implement it, because then the truck's going around doing that. So once you have that service in the community, you can. I will, you know, let you know that it's easier when you do public space recycling to do, you know, a water bottle drop area and a paper drop area than to do a commingle drop area, because then it just, whatever can the residence closest to when they're downtown, they use for whatever they want to use it for. So you have to be a little more diligent when you're talking about public space recycling.
Unless we have more than two of us that are in favor of looking at it, I don't see that it would be worth the effort to construct a draft and go any further, because you don't want to put people to a great deal of effort that's...
Absolutely. So, yeah, at this point, we're, I mean, it's at the will of the council. If you want to continue the conversation forward, we can get you those level numbers for that decision, and we can get you an amendment copy that will talk about what those true net numbers are and what a decision point would be for you. You know, even at that point, still, again, it's at the will of the council. It doesn't have to move any forward than those pieces of document. If you feel it has merit to move forward, we're more than willing to make that effort for you.
How carved in stone are the numbers you presented? Are they pretty much right on, or are they...
The numbers that we presented tonight are pretty much dead-on. We've gone through 60 days of analysis and performed a review to get to these numbers. They're not going to modify a lot. You know, again, you've got some items that you have to look at here, is the reallocation of the enterprise fund, that's $40,000, it's a buck oh nine per home is your breakout on that, bringing you from the 4.25 to the 3.16. If you took that other 32 cents, it brings you down to the 2.84. If you did the DEQ grant, it's actually going to drop you down, let's just say for the sake of argument, it's another 50 cents. So now you're at $2.30. You know, you're basically at the same number you were at when we looked at this at the last contract renewal at that point.
I'm not against it at this point. I want to see the numbers. I'm just, I'm not against it.
Okay.
Anyone else have a comment?
I think having the breakdown of the three levels would be helpful. I can personally tell you that it'd probably take me more than a month to fill a 96-gallon container of recyclables, and I'm a two-person household, so I think that might shed some light on it, too. So I would like to see more numbers, I guess.
You know, the city of Scottville went to 96 curbside last year. They've done very well with it. It's a little different program than what we're proposing here, but, you know, again, yeah, some people it'd take a month, some people could fill two carts in a week. So it just all depends on the home and the occupants of that home.
Do you remember off the top of your head what they're paying?
I do not have those numbers in front of me. I apologize.
If council wishes, we can bring back a, you know, proposal with that additional documentation on what the breakout is, on how many are at each level of service and...
Sure.
I think that would be most helpful. It gives us an idea of how many people can move down and achieve what the survey indicated was that most people were in favor of doing it. The vast majority were in favor if there was no increase in cost. And I know myself, we put very little recyclable out, but like I said, we typically put one bag of trash out each week, but I make weekly trips over to the recycle center, so.
We can probably have something by the second meeting in December, Matt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll bring back a proposal and also that additional information you requested.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is a discussion on the sidewalk ordinance program. Mr. McCula, you're up again.
I don't have anybody to bail me out this time, though. So back in September, actually on September 12th, we brought back some information to council on the current sidewalk program. Previous practice, five to 10, 15 years ago, the process was that residents would call in, report a bad portion of sidewalk. The Public Works Office would keep a list of those each year. There was about a $20,000 annual budget. The lists were, the Public Works would go out through the community and create a list that they thought would... use up those, that twenty thousand dollars were the funds, and then a project went each year. If, if there were bad sidewalks that were on the list but didn't get repaired that year, they stayed on to the next year, and that program just kept revolving. The current practice, what we're doing today and what we've been doing the last couple of years is trying to eliminate, number one, all the trip hazards in the city. That's been our top priority. The second would be broken or unleveled sections. That would be the next phase of what we would accomplish. And then third would be to actually construct new sidewalk where there's gaps or missing segments, or places where there isn't, where the sidewalk doesn't extend out to the roadway. To address the trip hazards, we've used a, a two-pronged approach on that. And one is saw cutting. So we've, you've probably seen the, the company in here. They've been in here for three years now. They cut off, if the, if the trip hazard's less than two inches, they're able to bevel the edge of that sidewalk so that it removes, removes that trip hazard. The cost of doing that is about twenty-five percent of what it is to completely remove that piece of sidewalk and replace it. So we found that it's been very effective. And then the second portion of that is where it's not cost-effective or not even physically possible to remove the trip hazard by the saw cutting. The Public Works crews have been trained and we've purchased, invested in some, some hand tools and equipment, and also got training so that we're moving and replacing those in-house. And we've been doing that, trying not to, which we're trying to make it as efficient as we can. So we're trying not to skip all around the city. We've taken, just arbitrarily picked one section of the city, which happened to be the north side, and we've slowly moved our way and completed all, probably about ninety-five percent of all the trip hazards on the north side. That's complete within the past two years. We've now, our, have crossed the river, and we're moving into what our crews call the center section. So that's east of, or I'm sorry, west of Maple Street. And if you think about the city, when you get up around Jefferson School, number one, there's not a lot of sidewalks, but it's also a new, newer area of the town relatively. So there's not a whole lot of, of work that needs to be done up there. Coming through the center section, east and west of Maple Street, lots of sidewalks, lots of old sidewalks, lots of big trees. So there's quite a bit of work to do in there. And then down in the Maxwell Town area, or east of US thirty-one, there's quite a bit. So, we just did a, a quick hand sketch. The area that's hatched in the red at the top is the north side. We've virtually completed all of the trip hazards in that area. The section that's in the middle, it says saw cut, saw cutting completed. We've actually expanded about three blocks north of that this fall. And so when you see the, our crews coming out next spring, that's the place that we'll be following up and taking care of all the trip hazards. And then the next round that we do of the saw cutting will be in that lower section. And we think that, I think I've got it summarized here in a minute, but here's an example of the, the saw cutting that we do. So each one of those places where you can see the lighter concrete, those were trip hazards, so those segments have been substantially improved. This is a picture of our crews pouring sidewalks this fall, or summer, on the north side. The funding breakdown for quite a few years has been about ten thousand allocated out of the major streets, ten thousand allocated out of the local streets, and totals about twenty thousand dollars annually. So the money that we've been spending comes right out of the street fund. At the pace that we're going, we're estimating somewhere in the sixty-eight years, it's hard to, hard to forecast that exactly, but within sixty-eight years that we'd be able to make an entire sweep of the, the community and address the majority of the trip hazards. This is very small, but I blew up the important section. So today, in our ordinance, chapter ten twenty-four point oh one that addresses sidewalks, actually says that the adjoining property owners to all the sidewalks are a hundred percent responsible for all the maintenance. So if a sidewalk's bad, the ordinance actually says that it's the property owner's responsibility to bring that up to current standards. And there's provisions through this ordinance that if you don't do that, city manager or their designee will notify, give a certain timeframe for you to bring in compliance. And if you don't, and the city takes the repairs on, you're billed back the cost of that improvement. So we've got a conflict. We've got what we used to do. I believe we've improved with the current way that we're addressing sidewalks, but neither of those matches what the ordinance says. So I think that gives us a couple of options, and that's kind of this next step tonight, is, one option is to follow the ordinance. That requires the residents to maintain the sidewalks. That could be done in individual projects. So if you have sidewalks that are bad in front of your house, you can contract that out to be done. Or the city could, could assist in bundling up those projects and bidding them out with one contractor, and then possibly doing a special assessment back to all of those affected property owners. Another option would be to modify the ordinance and put it in more in line with what we're actually doing. If that ordinance was modified, you could explore some cost-sharing ideas. I've looked in, on the sidewalk ordinance sections of quite a few, quite a few of the cities that surround us. Lunnington is one of the only ones that I found that actually has a cost-sharing. They do a fifty-fifty, and they do it on resident requests, the, the project. The city will improve it, repair, replace the sidewalks, but then the homeowner or property owner is responsible for fifty percent of that cost. Most of the communities that I saw actually have an ordinance that's almost identical to the one that we have on the books. But my, my belief is that most of them, though that's on the books as the ordinance, don't follow that exactly, and they still do improvement programs internally with their Public Works and with their street funds. If the ordinance was modified and the city was a hundred percent responsible for the sidewalks, you could continue on with the current program. You could look at ways of increasing funding. You know, the twenty thousand dollars comes out of our street funds. We've been putting a lot of emphasis and put, found more funds to put in for street improvements, but there, maybe there's a different balance. I mean, maybe there's a, a more, or a higher allocation of, of dollars to the street work, or to the sidewalk work. Or there could be large projects that are done also. There could be areas of the city that are taken on as a special assessment and done as districts. So there's, there's a few different ways that we can do that, and just would like your input on, on your thoughts and how things are now and how we'd like to move forward.
Who owns the trees that the, that the roots are upright in the sidewalk? The city or the people? The city owns them.
The city does.
They're our responsibility. That's my input.
Well, I've thought a lot about this, and I've went along and read some ordinances from other areas also, and we're, we, we don't enforce our ordinances very well when it comes to snow removal and that type of thing. We kind of, we've tended to take on that responsibility over the years. My take on this is that it's just another form of taxation, but it isn't taxes. I think we pay taxes. We need to figure out a way to, to do this. Now, if somebody wants to, to do their own sidewalk, I think we should assist them with how it has to be done and that type of thing.
Yeah, Kurt, you're absolutely correct, because the ordinance, I mean, we're talking about construction of sidewalks, but the ordinance talks about maintaining the sidewalks. And I believe maintenance means if you've got a heave section, you fix it, but it also means you edge it. It also means that you probably sweep it and you do the snow removal on it.
Yeah, I, I just, to me, it's just another form of taxation. It's a way of getting around, around it. It's just my, my little.
And the way we handle it today, we, once in a while, we have a resident that says, sure, I'd like to improve my section. I know it's not close, you know, near on your list. And when that happens, we'll do the removals and we'll get it prepped, and then typically they'll, they'll pay a contractor to upgrade it. That's probably happened three or four times in the past four years.
I struggle with the thought that I am responsible for a piece of property that I don't own. And reading all the ordinances, we're, we're not unlike any other area around us. I called my insurance company to find out, well, if I'm going to be responsible, how do I make sure that I'm covered by my insurance, because it doesn't cover that. The response to me was, "We, we have never paid a claim. We've had them. We've never played them. We've never paid anything, but we will defend you in court." That was the response I got. So, it just goes around and around. I mean, it's, it's hard for me to work on something that I don't have any interest in, or I can't. I sometimes think I should just let the grass grow and then see what you do, you know.
Right. Well, and, and several council people have brought up sidewalks in their district. We wanted to kind of get the word out in September on how things are being done. And when we were preparing for it, I, we didn't even realize that the ordinance read that way. So we brought that forward as well, that there's, kind of, current practice doesn't match what's on the books either.
I think the problem is with the word maintain. I think if we, we could improve the ordinance by defining what that word means, because most people think of it as just sweep, keeping the sidewalk clean and free, and, you know, snow shovel, sweeping it, not necessarily replacing concrete.
You know, it brings up an issue too. Council member Goodspeed asked about the trees. Who, who owns the trees that are in that public access strip? City owns those trees.
I believe so.
Yes. Yeah, I've, and my wife's worried. We got one sitting right next to the water line, coming off the street, going down the road that has grown over the years. If the tree roots break the water line, who's responsible for that? Am I responsible?
I'll defer to a legal expert.
You know, I mean, you get in, you get into those issues, and, and the other thing is, okay, the tree grows and the root gets bigger, and it lifts up a section of the, of the sidewalk, and that section's got to be replaced. And now, now the property owner by the ordinance has to pay for the, for the replacement of, of that piece of sidewalk, and, and it was caused by a piece of property they don't even own.
I think historically, the city's taken care of those situations, haven't they? Where the, I know we had just one recently where the, the tree roots.
The one that uprooted in, in front of Avon Mark, and it pulled a piece of sidewalk up.
But, but you guys are correct. I mean, a lot of those heave sections are from trees growing and, and the roots heaving those up. I mean, mo- most of the trip hazards are caused from that.
Who is, who's responsible if someone trips and hurts himself? Is it the city or the homeowner?
City's immune, governmental immunity protects the city with respect to that.
That would be the.
Well, you know, I mean, one could argue, I suppose, and I don't know if this has ever been litigated, but one could argue that based upon our ordinance and the responsibility being placed on the homeowner, that if someone trips, you know, one can make the argument that that's liabilities on the homeowner. But as far as the city's exposure, we're protected by governmental immunity.
Yeah, and what the insurance company has explained to me, because we've had, had those claims against us, is that unless there's a negligent act on the city's part.
I believe if it's raised up, how many inches it becomes?
Two inch.
Two inch?
Two inches. The way it was explained to me, two, if it's raised up over two inches, we're made aware of it, and we neglected to do anything about it, then we've got some exposure.
So if it's on the waiting list, though, to get, and someone.
There's no longer a waiting list. There is no, there's no list that's kept any longer. Right now, the program is to move through the city and try to get all of them.
So when they call, wouldn't that be, hey, I have a problem. I need this fixed, but we're going through the city. But won't that, but you were notified of it, though?
Those calls come in all the time, and we do our best to explain the current program. Now, there are instances, and if I go back to that map, the, the small segments that are in green are areas where there have been those trip hazards that are over two inches. We've been made aware of it, did not want to expose the city, and so what we've done is, is taken that trip hazard that is of, of major concern, and then we'll find eight or ten in the area so that we can move the crews in, do one full pour, and then move back to the regular program.
In that picture that you're doing a pour, was that one of them?
This was, no, that was just, what's that?
It's, I think it was the next one that I saw.
Yeah, we actually did it right around the corner. This is at the same, on the same pour.
So that was all taken out and replaced, or was it just a big, because I thought it was, you first have to do the trips and then the.
Yeah, this was, this was bad from one end to the other.
Okay.
What, what, what would the cost be? Eighty, eighty foot of sidewalk, eighty feet of, what, what would it cost? Just an estimate.
When we do a pour, we probably do about eighty to a hundred feet at a time, and that costs about two thousand, twenty-four hundred dollars in concrete. Now, the labor is being absorbed within our Public Works budget, so there's no labor expense to that. If you contracted that out, the two thousand dollars would probably end up being thirty-five to four thousand dollars.
So if you went around and started making people fix their own sidewalks, it would put a heavy burden on a lot of people, right?
Yes, it would. And that's why I included that other option of including it in a larger project where you may have a thousand of those slabs that could be bid out at once, and then you've got the economies of scale that could benefit all of them. Sean, what do you, what do you estimate for a slab? Is it about three fifty?
Yeah, three to five dollars a square foot, so.
So if you've got a five by five square, and if you've got a, a trip hazard or a bad section, you're most likely going to have to do at least two. So that'd be ten fifty, so that's, I could probably, just to do like a five by ten foot section, would probably run you two, three hundred dollars.
Well, if I hear you right, you say we've been operating in contrary to our ordinance for quite some time. I think they've been fixing sidewalks since I can remember coming to council meeting years ago. What, what do you think? Do we need to change the ordinance, or we need to start charging people? What's your opinion? I'll, I'll put, I'll put you on the hot seat.
This, this section you're showing right here, who paid for that?
This right here?
Yeah.
That came out of our, our annual twenty thousand dollar budget.
And we didn't charge the resident for that?
We did not.
And to have, we had an occasion that you can recall that we have charged a resident for sidewalk maintenance?
Not, not in my five years, no. The, the only, the only exception to that would be if they damaged a section of sidewalk and refused to repair it. Sometimes that happens.
It would seem ironic to, to turn around and, and at this point in time, charge somebody for something that has not been backcharged or assessed to property owners for a, a long period of time. Regardless of oversight, I would, I would think, as Mayor Proton Zalinski has indicated, you know, it's a, we pay property taxes. It would, would seem to me to be another form of that. I, you know, I shared with him, I said, well, a small town I grew up in, when, when they came out and, and sprayed tar on the road and dropped gravel over top of it, and every time they did that, we, we got assessed based on the frontage we had for our property. The, the, the city I lived in at, at the time where I grew up didn't, didn't share that cost. The property owners paid for it. It doesn't seem to be the case anymore. We don't pay for street repair and, and stuff in, in front of the property unless it's something that we require for a hookup or a street breakage. But we do charge for those, right?
We require them to repair it, and they put a deposit down, and then the deposit is refunded unless they don't complete the repair. And then we use that money to, to finish the project. You asked me an open question. I, I view this, just like I view the water system, the sewer system, the street network. You have limited funds. You have aging infrastructure. I believe my job is to try to manage and improve those with the funds the best that we can. And so every year, I think we're getting better, better, better. I think the guys are getting better, better, better at doing this work in house. I think that we've taken that twenty thousand dollars a year, and we're getting the equivalent of forty thousand dollars of value out of that. I think that it doesn't feel to the citizens like that's enough yet, but I think it will start catching up. I think that we've added capacity when we. I think that we've added capacity when we changed over the union operators of the bridge. Because now, this time of year, I've got two more employees than I would, than I would have a year ago. So, we're trying to get more stuff done in the fall, more stuff done in the spring, so that I can do more things like sidewalk work. But adding some money into that, that budget certainly would, would help speed that up.
With the ordinance how it's stated now, what if, what are, what happens if a resident doesn't even have a sidewalk in his driveway? Like it's all gravel? Would that mean that he'd have to place a sidewalk there?
I don't believe that it applies to sidewalks that don't exist, no.
So like if we were to reword, to maintain and to define that, would the gravel sidewalks be part of maintaining?
Where are there gravel sidewalks? I'm sorry.
I know my neighbor has a driveway that-
Is gravel?
Is gravel. And there's quite a few here in M S D.
Right, I have a gravel driveway, but I don't have a gravel sidewalk. I don't, I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house.
So like there's a portion, so I have sidewalk in front of my house and then the neighbor next to my neighbor has sidewalk. But on the driveway, it's just gravel. So it's sidewalk, gravel, sidewalk. So how would that be if we were to define?
Under the, under the current program in the three-tiered system, once we get rid of the trip hazards throughout the city, we would go back and build to fill those gaps in. If it's not currently a sidewalk, I don't think the, unless George can correct me, but I don't think if there is a sidewalk, then I don't think you're required to maintain a sidewalk that doesn't exist.
I think that would be something to kind of look into if you're, because that's a right of way, even if it is a gravel. Because you have to walk to next, to the other sidewalk.
Sounds like that's just some, they made a driveway and put this gravel in there.
It's an actual sign. I think it just over, I mean, it's, that house has been over 100 years, so maybe it just-
I'd like to see the ordinance, I'd like to see the ordinance gone over and rewritten to what's more current today. And I'd also like to add, if I had my way, I would add the snow removal part of that to that. Because we also do that too. We also remove snow. But yet, in the ordinance, it's mandatory that I clean off my snow.
Yeah, and the reality is, we've got over 70 miles of sidewalks. And while we do do snow blowing, we try to keep it along the major streets. We try to keep it close to the schools and then we branch out from there. But every time it snows, the program starts over and we'll never be able to clear all the sidewalks in the city. It's just not realistic.
I understand that. But, but we do do it and there are people who try to do it. And there are people who don't, and we don't have any enforcement. So, I'm not sure what the answer is. Do you start forcing people? Do you start writing, giving citations, civil infraction?
There are communities that do that.
Absolutely. And they have a code enforcement officer. I think we have one right back here that was, that did that for a while.
There's a, one of our employees has parents that live in a community that you have a certain timeframe after a snow event.
Twenty-four to 48 hours.
And if you have not cleared it, a contractor hired by the community will come clear your sidewalks and will send you a bill for that service.
There are some areas that allow 24, some law 48. They give you a notice that gives you another 24. If you haven't done something then, they come by with a little. It costs you money and they end up doing it, yeah.
Well, I'll go back to my original suggestion. I do think the language needs to be cleared up in the, in the ordinance. I think residents need to know that they, they need to maintain their sidewalk and keep it free of debris and snow and leaves. Because people actually do trip on snow and ice. And that's not necessarily what I would call a trip hazard because the sidewalk was uneven. So they need to take responsibility for clearing that.
I would have to agree with Beaton to reword it and then, but have us repair sidewalks of the city. But maintaining is different.
Would council like this to be referred to the ordinance committee for some work? Or would you like the staff to put the work in on it? Either one would work. I'm just trying to figure out what the staff, what the council's preference would be.
Well, I'm having, I'm having probably some of the same difficulty as some of the others are having. I mean, I don't own, I don't, I don't own the sidewalk, but yet if, if it needs repaired, I'm responsible for repairing it. I understand I have a responsibility to keep it clear for pedestrian traffic and I do remove the snow and try and keep it up. But I, I'm having difficulty thinking that, you know, if, if this tree pulls it up and sections have to be replaced, I may potentially be assessed to, to repair a damage from, from something I've got no control over to begin with.
But what I've been hearing from council is that you don't want to be, we need to define what maintenance is.
What maintenance is.
And so that's what I was asking, you know, we can, staff can, can do that and come back with a revised ordinance? Or does council want that referred to the ordinance committee to work on? It doesn't matter one way or the other. I just need to know which.
I personally, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I would, I would like to see staff come up with something and then refer it to the ordinance committee to see what, what they think.
We can do that?
Maybe we should see if people on council are more in favor of keeping it status quo with the city making the repairs to the sidewalk the way that their plan has been evolving the past year.
I'm, I'm not for taxation without representation. I just, I, that's the, that's the way I view this. It's just my personal thing. I, I just, we've been doing it and it's been done long before I ever sat here and I-
I think we need to stay how we are doing it, the status quo.
Just bring the ordinance into compliance of what we're doing, I think.
Yeah, we'll bring something back. I don't know if it'll be in December or into January, but we'll bring something.
Also address the ice and snow and that type of thing too, please. I think that would probably fall under maintenance.
Thank you.
End of your comments. Thank you, Jeff. Next item for discussion is a discussion on medical marijuana ordinance. City manager, city attorney, planning and zoning.
We'll let the city attorney take the lead on this. Denise and I will jump in as appropriate. I've got a, I'll let, I'll just turn it over to George right now.
So, as council is aware, the enactment of the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act requires in order for a licensee under that act, whether it's a grow operation or a provisioning center or any of the other types of license holders, to be permitted within a municipality, the municipality has to adopt an ordinance to allow it. Opting in is what the state calls that. We drafted and worked quite hard on drafting an ordinance that was provided to council. And since that time, we've had through LARA, the Michigan Department of License and Regulatory Affairs, and then also the BMMR, which is the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulations, issuing more than one advisory opinion a week. And so even since the time we've provided you with the ordinance, there's been some changes that we've made and that I'll go through with you. But it's really, because it's so new, all we can do is draft something if council's inclined to authorize this as best we can under the law as, as we know it. A few of the things that have happened since that time and what the municipality is able to regulate is, number one, is it going to authorize a facility and what type of facility and what number of facilities? One of the things that was not addressed in the initial ordinance that we drafted and we went through and the city manager and Denise and I talking about the process by which approval would take place for someone applying for, we use the term permit within the city. And we talked about establishing a marijuana commission, which is a group of individuals, instead of just the city clerk and putting this all on the city clerk, having this group of individuals that would be established that would review an application and decide whether or not to grant the permit. Initially, we had placed a member of council suggesting that that might be something you'd want to consider on that. And then, and it didn't make its way into the ordinance that you were provided. But we also then, or I came to the conclusion that we also need to have some mechanism for someone that may be denied a requested permit by the city to appeal that decision. And where does that appeal go to? We know if there's a refusal of a special use permit, that it goes to, you know, there's a process to appeal that to the board, Board of Review. No, Board, I mean ZBA, not the Board of Review, but ZBA. Well, where does the appeal process for an application go? And what I added was the appeal would go to city council. Well, then, when we put that provision in, then does that change having a city council person sit on that commission? Because if you have a council person on the commission that's reviewing the initial application and then it's denied, and then you have that same council person sitting on the appeal body on the issue of whether that denial was proper. I, I think it's, it's acceptable to have that occur where you'd have a council person on the commission and also be part of the appeal process if that were to take place. It's just that we were, in working through it, it seemed more logical to not have that occur. Couple of other additional changes from the advisory opinions that we received is that there is discussion about stacking of licenses. Where you may have, for instance, a grow operation that would have more than one license in one particular location. And we didn't address that within our ordinance. However, an advisory opinion was issued saying that that is permitted. But in order for it to be permitted, the ordinance needs to allow that. And so we added, I added some language that does authorize, subject to that commission's review, the ability for a applicant to have stacked licenses in one location. Similarly, there was a question of whether or not you could have co-licenses at a similar, the same location. And that, by that I mean, you might have a grow operation and also a processing operation in the same location. And the state has indicated, yes, we're going to permit that. It doesn't require that the municipality authorize that, just that it would not refuse to allow that. But I, I think it made sense to indicate within our ordinance, again, and I have placed additional language in the ordinance that would specifically authorize the commission to approve co-licenses. Again, might be a, the most logical one we'd see would be a grow operation in a processing facility. Council has already indicated to us that provisioning centers would not be permitted within the city. And you're able to do that. And the ordinance that we have drafted does not have a room for a provisioning center to be permitted within the city. Those are some of the changes that we've made. We've also, sort of in combination with the ordinance that was drafted, the police power ordinance that we have, there's a separate ordinance process underway and that's what Denise has been working on. And that is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow these types of facilities within certain sections of the city. And I think right now, we're looking at two different sections of the city. And under both of those circumstances, it would be subject to a special use permit. The idea being that there can be some constraints put on how that facility would be operated. One of the things that Denise has been working on is odor. You know, that we'd have some restriction or ability within that special use process to control that. You know, there wouldn't be odor that would be offensive to surrounding neighbors to a facility. Similarly, within the ordinance that has been presented to council, we've made an additional change that linked the odor part of it to the special use permit and said, you know, you're still subject to those same requirements regarding controlling the odor of the facility. Mayor Protem Zalinski had, had mentioned to me as well, seeing an ordinance that dealt with illumination and that, you know, there not be, if there's a grow facility, that we don't have illumination from that facility that would be offensive to neighboring property owners. I don't think that should be an issue because our ordinance requires that grow operations be in an enclosed locked facility. And so there really shouldn't be any outside illumination. But I did add some language as all that just confirms that, that that is not something that could occur. Illumination that would be outside of the building. Illumination, and I'm talking about relating to the grow facility, not lighting a parking lot area or something like that. And so we've been working on it and continue to work on it. But what you've received as council, with the comments that I've made as far as the changes that, that we've been working on, that's really what we're looking at as a draft. My anticipation is that once we have sort of the language in as final form as we can have it, that we would be sending that off to the state. Hopefully even before council's asked to approve it to make sure that there's not anything in there that the state sees as an issue, so.
I think the illumination issue becomes, becomes relevant as, as we talk about an adjacent amphitheater and boutique motel rooms and condominiums and townhouses and, and other co-located development. If, if you had windows, the, the experience that, that we had down in Detroit two weeks ago was the, the lights are very bright inside and there, there were no windows, no skylights or anything to illuminate anything. But it was like, I wish they'd taken some sunglasses in there. It, it was a very bright and intense environment.
Well, I, I did, I did add language after having that discussion with Mayor Protem Zalinski that that would be part of the application processes to indicate whether there is any illumination issue with regard to the operation.
When we talk about the approval of a license, there's certainly a process for DDA redevelopment liquor licenses and, and other licenses that may become available for sale. But I believe in my experience, city council approves those license. They're recommended and vetted and brought to council for approval. Why would a, a license to grow medical marijuana be any different in its approval process?
You, you mean, why have a commission at all?
Yes.
You know, and that was just an option that in reviewing it and, and sort of reviewing what other communities we're looking at is, is a way for us to have, I think in part have some of the city staff that deals with these specific issues like public safety, like zoning and planning. You know, those are the people with the professional experience in that that maybe could, you know, be better suited for reviewing that type of application. But no, mayor, there's, there's nothing to say that we couldn't eliminate the process of, of this commission and just have it come to council.
The city clerk certainly has the public safety director and the city attorney available along with the city manager to consult in the process. And by not having a commission, then a denial by the city clerk automatically shifts it to appeal to the city manager and from the city manager to city council as, as I read the ordinance from Travis City.
Well, and they're, they're all different too. I mean, they're all a little bit different. And I, I've really struggled with what does that board actually do? And in most cases, they're like a, for a hearing, if somebody does something that's not right, the city clerk would notice it or the police, the city police department would notice it. They would cite them and then it comes before this board. Other than that, I couldn't find much that they did.
Well, besides reviewing the initial application, you're right, the other part of it is dealing with a revocation of a, of a license if that, those circumstances.
And a lot of them don't even have boards. It's all done by the city clerk and by the, the city police.
That's true. Yeah, yeah. And of, of course- That's true. Yeah, and of course, maybe in larger communities where they're dealing with a lot more applications for a license, maybe that is where you'd see more often the commission that we talked about. This is just something that's up to council.
Right. It's just, I think, one of the considerations was it was a more formalized process. It spreads out the decision-making from one person to five. And in essence, you have, you know, five sets of eyes on it instead of one. And that was our, part of our thought process.
We could still have three of those five eyes on it, but we would have different levels of appeal available. And all the players, all the significant players in the city would be on the same page and have the same information as it flowed through the process. And, you know, I look back, we had Councilman Whitliff as Chair of the Planning Commission and a member of City Council. I found great benefit in that the Planning Commission was generally thorough enough, and the ones I attended, to the point and detailed enough that when he came in and explained what the recommendations was, or what concerns they had, it was very beneficial to the rest of City Council to understand that. That's why I favor council members being on commissions and committees, because it gives you an extra set of eyes and ears to share with other people. But I thought the ordinance was well-written, and I applaud everybody's effort for putting this together. And I know it's time-consuming, and there's a lot of examples. And I understand in reading and following these activities that it's still a work in progress, until they get to the point where they actually start taking applications and issue licenses. I'm sure there'll be further changes as we go along.
You're correct. In my opinion is that, you know, once we adopt an ordinance, we're going to continue to get guidance from the state. And I can see where we're going to have to come back and have council make some amendments to the ordinance, just to stay compliant with the state guidelines.
One other area as well that we're required to change from the draft that council received was that now it's pretty clear, I think, under the state regulation, that the approval from the municipality occurs before the final issuance of the license from the state. And we had it the other way around, that you needed the approval of the state before you'd come before the municipality. And so, that's another change that we've had to make since getting a better, clearer idea on the way the state's going to regulate this.
I have a couple of questions. Looking at Laura and the different regulations for the different licenses, especially the four that we're talking about authorizing in our ordinance, when you talk about the grower and the processor licenses, they don't seem to be in conflict with each other. In other words, a processor license, right now, is, cannot have an interest in a secure transporter or a compliance facility, a safety compliance facility. But they're not in any conflict with the grower. So, I can see the grower and the processor license being taken out by the same people, or the same company, or the same LLC. And the secure transport license must not have an interest in a grower, processor, processing center, or safety compliance facility, and must not be a registered qualifying patient or registered caregiver. That also includes transport of money. The safety compliance facility license must not have an interest in a grower, secure transport, processor, or provisioning center. So, if we were to look at the developers that came forward to us, I guess my question is, and not having enough information on this part of it, are they going to be applying for a grower's, processor's license, secure transport license, and a safety compliance facility license? And is it in the spirit of the law to have them in the same facility? And do they have to be separated by different LLCs?
The, first off, on the grow and the processing, the state has told us that those can be located at the same facility, but they need to be separate and distinct parts of that facility. In fact, they have to have separate entrances and exits. They can't, you know, there's going to have to be walls separating those types of facilities. But I also agree that, I mean, I don't expect that the people that have come before council thus far would be, you know, the secure transporter, as you pointed out, is going to have to be separate and distinct. And that only makes sense.
Right.
That's why the law is the way it is. But my expectation is that you would likely see the grow facility and the processing facility be managed by the same group of individuals.
Right. And that was my point. But if we allow the secure transport license, which I think is kind of necessary, and the safety compliance facility license, that indicates to me by their roles, that they have to be by different people.
Yes. And I don't, you know, here's one of the issues that we've struggled with. You will have a secure transport facility that will be operating, could be operating in the city, transporting marijuana that has gone through the processing facility and transporting it somewhere else, but they won't have necessarily a license within the city of Manistee. Their license might be in, you know, Ingham County. But they're travel, I mean, I don't understand that they need a license in every county that they travel through. And so, while we have that under our ordinance, I'm not sure that you would see a secure transporter asking to be located or licensed as their principal office within the city.
Do we need to have anything in our ordinance that follows what these regulations state? That they can't, that the growers and the processors can't have an interest in a secure transport company or a safety compliance facility?
Well, you know, part of our ordinance requires that they meet and comply with all the state regulation. And for them to get issued a license by the state, and what you're describing is provisions with, you know, from the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, they're not going to get a license issued unless they're in full compliance with that. And so, do we need that in our ordinance? I guess we do have it already in our ordinance when we require that they comply with all the state regulation.
Okay. I just thought it was important maybe to talk about it in the work session, so that people understand that, that they have to be separate.
I think our ordinance doesn't fully address the complete state law. I mean, there are some issues that the state is going, that they're just going to be a part of and govern that we're doing, and I don't think we could address. I mean, it would just be page after page after page.
And, you know, their oversight and the process that they'll follow to make sure there's compliance with that part of it, is something that we don't want to be probably involved in. And, you know, from the tagging of marijuana and making sure that they follow the track, I guess it's the tracking system, that's not something that we're going to be involved in, but the state's going to be.
The disposal of what they don't use, and how they dispose of it, and how they make it unrecognizable. And, I mean, it just goes on forever, that state law.
And we've addressed some of that, because we do want to have some oversight and ability to say that if the state's not overseeing this, that we want to be able to say, you're not disposing of the unused portion of your marijuana appropriately. And so, we will, and we have some of that language within our draft.
You know, I'm going to, let me say, I understand time is of the essence here, because we've got a proposal for some development, and it's associated with the growing and processing of marijuana. And there are other sites that are simultaneously being looked at. My concern is that we would make something so cumbersome and drag it out to the process that we would miss an opportunity for employment and economic development in the city, which the city can certainly use a little spurt of economic development and employment opportunity. The city of Detroit had on the ballot back in November, some referendum issues from their citizens because of their frustration with roadblocks that City Council put up about public hearings and dragging the process out. And you can't do this within 500 feet of this, and so on and so forth. And they, essentially in November, by the popular vote, took that out of City Council's hands and said, you know what, if this, if, and it was distribution centers primarily, if a distribution center meets the requirements for licensing by the state of Michigan, they'll be issued a license. City Council didn't have a vote on it anymore. And I wouldn't like us not to get in a situation like that, where people think that we're not responsive, or we're not moving towards something. But I think Mayor Protem's right. You know, I mean, it's kind of like when we redid the DDA bylaws. We do not need to repeat in the local DDA bylaws, state statute, word for word, and have a document that's three times as long as it needs to be. We need to say what's relevant to the city of Manistee, address what controls that we want in this process, who's going to approve it, who's going to have oversight, who's got authority to call for a violation and to suspend a license, and what the appeal process is. But it needs, to be fairly streamlined and concise, in my opinion.
And one of the things that we did, and we were struggling with the amount of time, but we did put a provision in there that requires action on an application within a fixed time period. I think we had 45 days.
Forty-five days.
We were debating how long that should be, and maybe could have made it a little shorter, but 45 days, we felt was enough cushion to investigate, you know, some of the information that was supplied with the application.
And it specifies no more than 45 days. It could be turned around sooner than that. And we tried to strike a balance between expediency, but doing right by the community. So, that's why we, you know, we just said no more than 45 days.
So, I'm just trying to fast-forward this into reality a little bit. For the safety compliance facility license, if somebody wanted to take one out, who, they're not allowed to have an interest in a grower, secure transport, processor, or provisioning center, that would probably have to be in, I don't know, would it have to be in a different building, other than the ironworks building?
Well, the guidance we have is that the state is saying that you can have three distinct licenses under one roof, and that's the processing, the growing, and the provisioning. Those are the only ones they identify. They don't say that you can have the
Safety compliance.
Safety compliance or the secure transporter under that same roof.
I guess I'm just curious, where would the safety compliance facility license or that type of activity, what type of zoning would that require? Just mixed use, or?
What we've done is, when we had started this discussion, knowing that it had to be located in either an industrial, with an industrial use, which I consider to be processing and manufacturing, or an agricultural use, which is a nursery or greenhouse. So, there's actually four zoning districts that it would be applicable to. It would be both of the industrial districts, the light industrial and general industrial. The C1 zoning district already allows greenhouse and nursery, and so does the peninsula. But in the peninsula district, I've specified the language or drafted the language, that the facility can't be more than 49% of the entire building. So, there has to be 51% that's a mixed use in the same building. So, what it does is, if they're not allowed to have the safety compliance facility in that building, they'll have to find a different location, in another zoning district, or in the same zoning district in a different location.
To be honest, though, I'm not sure that a safety compliance facility is anything more than an office. I don't know if the facility goes to the processing center and makes its inspection. I mean, I don't have the answer.
Safety compliance, the way I read it, was pretty much record-keeping.
That's what I would think. And so, I don't think that that's probably as much an issue.
I thought they were testing the product there.
No. They don't do any testing, not to my knowledge.
I don't know, for certain.
They didn't, the facility we went to.
They told us they didn't. They sent it all out for testing.
It would be, it wouldn't be logical to me that you'd have a secure transporter transport from the processing facility to a safety compliance facility for the safety compliance, and then transfer it to a provisioning center or something. So, I would think the safety compliance licensee would probably travel to the processing center and inspect. Again, I, you know, we're learning as we go on some of this.
And just for council's information, the Planning Commission is going to have a live webinar that's put on by MSU Extension here on Thursday. That's the 30th, and that starts at 6:00 PM. It's supposed to be about two hours. The Planning Commissioners have all been invited to come under training. And I would be more than happy to have any of you join us.
That's
That's this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. And even if you come late or have some other obligation, if you want to come for part of it, that's fine.
What time was that again?
Six.
Six?
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess the one outstanding thing that I see right now is the commission versus the clerk?
Yes.
What's
I would, I would, I would favor, I would favor going with the clerk in having an appeal process step through the city staff. And I guess for a couple of reasons. One, a five-person commission made up of the city manager, the public safety director, and planning and zoning, is the city manager and two of his employees. That's a majority of the commission to begin with, under your control. I mean, why would we need two citizens at large? I mean, you already got a majority. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, that
That's based on, apparently, the assumption that we're all going to agree.
You know, employer-employee relations sometimes go that way. So, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, when I looked at the other model, I thought the other model was fairly streamlined. I think, I question why it is that City Council approves liquor licenses and someone else is going to approve a marijuana-growing license. That just seemed a little offsetting to me. Not real objectionable, it just seemed contrary. I mean, but I'm good with that, because I, you know, I have faith, I have faith in the staff doing things.
Appreciate that. A lot of time is just to take a burden off City Council. If it's something that can be accomplished at the staff level, and we have plenty of guidance in the ordinance, then council has other things they can do.
I think we're moving in the right direction. And like I said, I applaud the efforts that's gone into it thus far. And I've communicated with Mr. Saylor, you know, what
We'll keep the commission in there, and then probably, I don't think you can have it ready by the 5th, can you?
Well, you know, I don't know that that rush is necessary, because we still have to have the zoning ordinance amendment, too. And that's going to take a while. So, we'll have it, maybe we can get it back by the 19th, just to
I, part of the thought with the commission is now we're going to have to advertise for members and applicants to get on a commission, and now we're going to have to pull a quorum together to have meetings and get things done, and you got the window. I'm just
Your inclination would just have the clerk be the sole person
Yes.
To review. If the clerk denies it, then the appeal process would
Then it goes to the city manager.
To the city manager.
To the city manager.
And then it comes to City Council.
And the City Council.
And then to a judiciary above City Council, if there's an appeal above that.
You know, that's legislative. I don't know if there would be any appeal.
Yeah. I mean, I have, I have a comfort zone either way. I would prefer it goes through the city clerk and city manager and step that process. I think that would be a little more expedient in handling and processing.
Is that the consensus of council, that you want the clerk to handle this, and then appeal to the city manager?
The way I have read some of those ordinances, it's the city clerk and the chief work together, Public Safety Director work together on those things. The clerk actually received, would receive the complaint, would work with the chief to investigate, and it's kind of a process that they went through. And they kind of spelled it out, how they went through it. That doesn't mean that's the way we have to do it. I'm just saying that's
Well, I guess I need to know from council, who do you want authorizing the permits?
City clerk. I may, are in favor of authorizing
What was council consensus?
City clerk.
City clerk.
City clerk. City clerk.
Okay, we can change it to clerk, and then the appeal to the city manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I have a request for a five-minute break. We'll take a five-minute break at this time, please.
So many slideshows today.
We still have two more items on the agenda.
Three.
Three.
Three. Three, yes. Discussion of sale of city property policy.
Mayor, before we start on that, I just want a full disclosure to, I used to work for one of the people who leased property. I did discuss this with Mr. Saylor, he doesn't seem any issue with it. I just wanted council to know, I used to work for this Cedar Street Marina. I also store my motorhome there and my boat there, and I do a lot of business with it. If council has any objection to me participating in this conversation, don't speak now or forever hold your peace, huh?
Lease or sale?
That's the next-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said all that for the next one, okay?
We have to remember that. Can you repeat it?
Lexley, you're up.
Okay. As you know, we have, staff has directed to review all of the city property that is on the books. With the help of the planning commission, we went through and identified properties. For city council, we have come to council, had approval for the sale of the property. The plan was to bid the properties to adjoining properties owners for the lots that were substandard, and then properties that would meet the requirement of the ordinance. We would actually, I've worked on an RFP for broker-realtor services to sell those properties along with industrial properties that the city has, which was kinda like the avenue we were going. In the review of the council policy CP3, we realized that if we proceeded that way, would be in violation of your policy. So, we've gone through and prepared a draft for city council's consideration that would follow what we had discussed with city council for the sale of those properties. Council policy CP3 was adopted in April of nineteen eighty-eight. It was revised in November eighth of two thousand and six. And the proposed changes that we are looking at for the property would be item two, that currently reads, "Those properties of vacant or unoccupied land which have no future value or use by the city," would be changed to read, "Anticipated use properties are those properties that the city would like to market with specific anticipated uses or development, including properties zoned industrial in the city industrial park, Renaissance industrial park, and surrounding industrial properties in Manistee Township." Item number three, we would remove the language of vacant or unoccupied. It would then read, "Those properties which have no future value or use by the city and are deemed to be surplus properties." So, we've actually titled properties. The current procedure, pretty much, we're going to get rid of all of it, and we are proposing a new procedure that specifically talks about the procedure for anticipated use properties, that those properties can be sold for development without a public bidding. The city will consider factors such as development experience and financial viability when considering the sale of those properties, that we can hire a broker to sell the properties on behalf of the city, and any proposed sale requires the approval of city council. The surplus properties, the sales would be required to review and recommendation to city council by the planning commission, which has already taken place. A minimum value will be established for the properties by the city assessor or a real estate broker in consultation with the city manager and a recommendation made to city council, which we've already done that. If the city council concurs with the recommendations, the city manager will be instructed to advertise and accept bids for the sale. A broker-realtor may be hired to sell properties on behalf of the city, and the received bids or offers will be reviewed by city council, and council reserves the right to accept or reject any bids. The planning commission involvement is not required for the sale of property located outside the city limits. That language is the same as before, just kinda pared down. And properties to be leased by the city should be executed in a similar manner. And that's the current language we already have. So, you received in your packets the current policy, the policy with the strikeouts, and the proposed policy. And after the policy's adoption, if that's the avenue that city council wants to go, there are four properties in the city and one in Filer Township that would be let out for bid. We would accept a request for proposal for surplus properties. Those are the two lots on Monroe Street, one lot on Ninth Street, and the one lot adjacent to the River Park Edgewater properties. We would also have a broker service for the industrial properties. That would be Lot twelve and thirteen in the industrial park in the city, and all of the Renaissance Park and industrial properties in Manistee Township. And that's what I have for this one. Do you have any questions?
You're not actually hiring a broker. You'll be signing a buyer's agency agreement with a broker to-
Correct.
-represent the city, so that the word hire is a little bit, needs a little bit further explanation, so that nobody knows that-
Yeah, we would, we would-
People understand that-
We would enter into contract, same as any other property owner would, who wants to sell their properties.
Right. I just wanna clear that up, since we won't be participating, so.
Any other comments or questions? Or thank you very much.
I have a question.
Of course.
Um, identifying properties. Was there a criteria for that, or, I, what I'm getting at is, our leased property, why, why do we continue to have leased properties? Anybody know? Why, why do we have it? Why, why don't we sell it?
That we're leasing?
Yes.
We're leasing it from someone else.
No, not that we're leasing, that we're leasing out. Why aren't we selling that property?
Trying to think what properties it-
It would actually be the ones where the riverfront leases are located.
Oh.
That also, that section of property that we do lease with the riverfront property, or the property that would be around the Boathouse Grill, I think are the only actual leases we have to people who actually utilize city property for their own purposes. That's the section of Spruce Street, which we'll actually be going through on the next slide, down to Lake Michigan. The River Walk is also, like, located across that property. And the property around the Boathouse Grill is actually part of the marina, and I don't believe that we can actually split up and sell that property, because we've gotten grant funding for that. And typically, the state, when there's a grant funding, requires a deed restriction, so you're not able to sell anything that's part of a public park that has received funds from grants. That language was there. I just left it in the ordinance, or the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm next up.
Uh, discussion of riverfront leases.
Okay, now what I said applies.
Okay, the background. The city has city-owned property, which is leased to adjacent property owners. There are four residential personal boat slips, and there are three commercial marinas. In two thousand and thirteen, the rates were reduced from a ten-year lease to a five-year lease. And this is actually the area in question. You can see where Spruce Street starts, that is just, of course, use of the Johnson property. Dr. Payne's actually has a marina behind his. We have the Riverside Motel that has a marina. We have the Cedar Street Marina. Then we have four residential leases, that's with Lloyd, Meister, Kraus, and Lemon. Then, in exchange for an easement, and that's where they pay a dollar, is both the Johnson property and the Shafely property. And the proposed residential rates, um, what I did is, I took the ten years from two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve. The current leases expire this December. Then, I'm proposing a five-year extension, and we did quite a rate reduction back in two thousand and thirteen. And they actually had no annual increase for several years. And that was the first three years, and then after that, they had a three percent increase in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. What's proposed is a three percent increase from two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two. And you'll notice it will take until two, two thousand and twenty to achieve the annual payment that was paid back in two thousand and twelve. And back in two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve, the actual increase was five percent annually. Now, that's for the residential rates. Then we break it down into the commercial rates, and you'll see it's pretty much the same thing. It would take until two thousand and twenty for the commercial leases to, again, be charged what they were being charged back into two thousand and twelve. And that is for the Payne lease, and that would be the Riverside Motel lease, and that is also for the Oneecoma Marine lease. And again, Dennis and Emmy Johnson, and Paul and Amy Shafely, in exchange for their easement, we pay, they pay a dollar annually. And so, pretty much an overview is the two thousand and seventeen to twenty-two leases is a five-year lease with an annual three percent increase, and it will take until two thousand and twenty for the rate to exceed the two thousand and twelve rate. Attorney Saylor has reviewed the leases, and it requires council authorization for us to move forward. So, I need to know the wishes of city council.
Move forward? I don't have any-
Comment?
Good job.
Good job. Move forward.
Okay. I'll prepare the agenda item.
And we come to our final item, the added item, the appointment of council member beaten to the AES board.
Well, as you guys might recall, at some time in October, you appointed me to the AES board, because they had a seat designated for a city council person. And I've been to a couple of meetings. One of the first things that happened was, when I went to my initial meeting, I was asked to sign a confidentiality agreement and, and fill out a sheet stating where I had some conflict of interests. So, I put down the two that are most obvious, city council and the fact that I'm a Realtor. Now, a 501(c)(3), they don't, their designation as nonprofits allow them to not have to deal with having open meetings. They don't have to have open meetings. They can, all of their meetings can be considered closed meetings. So, honestly, I did not know that specifically when I first took on this assignment. So, that, that in itself kind of clarified a few things, but one of the things that does worry me is, I wanna be doing my job that represents the wishes of council, since you appointed me to this position. So, if I'm voting on something, I don't really know what the wishes of council are. So, today, we did have a meeting at AES, and we, we did talk through this a little bit. And I'm able to disclose some of the things that they're working on. Well, first of all, with the new executive director, she's trying to get a handle on, on all of the needs, and trying to redo the bylaws for the directors. And in the bylaws that they're proposing, which I think makes absolute sense, and I think some, some people, maybe even a couple of people on council, have expressed openly that there's too many people already on their board. So, they wanna, they wanna pare that down to a nine-person board, which made, which does make some sense, and we did vote on that today, and that, that part of it did, did pass. What they're proposing in the makeup of the board is that three members would be representing public bodies, three members representing private industry or business, and three members representing nonprofit economic interest group or community members. The other change that they're making is, rather than saying, for example, to the county, you have a seat on the board, they're going to pick who they want on the board. So, in other words, they're going to decide which three members representing the public bodies they want on their board. The other thing that they are, that is under consideration, that won't be in their bylaws, but it'll be part of their policy, if they get a majority vote on it, is, and it's likely that they do, it seemed like there was a lot of consensus for this, is that there's going to be a pay-to-play, basically, or a pay for the seat on the board. And they're talking, they're talking five thousand dollars as a reasonable amount to have a seat on the board. And it could be a lesser amount, and they could, you know, it's, it's all, that part of it all needs to be debated. The one thing they have put in place, though, is that they, they've all agreed for the nine person board. So, those are the things they're grappling with. So, they're gonna have another meeting on December fourteenth, and hopefully, by that time, we, there's a smaller group of them, an executive committee or executive subsection of the executive, of the board, that's gonna meet, and they're gonna come up with, there's five of them, and they're gonna come up with, they're gonna decide, would they really want three members representing public bodies? Because there's some discussion about that. Some people, and I think this was a good point, and you should, you should think about it, is, some people believe that if they invite, say, a specific public per, elected official, that frees them a little bit from having to report back to their county board or their city council, or feel the pressure to do so, and they promised that they could also make sure that the new executive director makes regular appearances before the municipalities to help cover that, so that there's open communication, so there's, so that you know what's happening. They wanna be able to pick somebody that matches a certain subset of qualities that would be a good person to fit on the board, and that's yet to be determined, and that's gonna be determined by this five-person group. So, that, that's what's coming down the wire. Since we're gonna be a, a pay-for-service anyway, going forward, I'm not really sure exactly what's going to be discussed on a board level. That question has come up, and we debated that a little bit, and one of the things AES is trying to do, they're trying to diversify and get more communities and get more groups, get even more private industries to donate to AES, so that they can have a, they're more diversified that way, gives them some stability, and they can look toward the future and start planning things that they see out in the future that communities should become aware of and start making some commitment toward making improvements in certain areas. So, my feeling is that I'm perfectly happy to do the wishes of council and stay on this board, because it doesn't, I don't think I'm going to be on it, or very much longer anyway, because of the direction that they've changed. And I just want a little feedback from everybody.
I, I give you a little feedback. Had I known that they were gonna ask you to sign a non-disclosure agreement and not share the information you gained from the meeting with the other council members, I never would have made an appointment to that board. I was, I was unaware of, of that circumstance to begin with. Or, I would not have appointed a council member, I probably would have, have asked council to consider appointment of the city manager. Our first point of contact for economic development and such, to, to fill that role. I'm not comfortable appointing or, or asking any council member to go somewhere and do something where they're not free to discuss the information and the experience that they've had with the rest of city council. I mean, that's, that's part of what commissions and credits and, and going out and doing things are all about, it, sharing information. Each, each one of us should have the same information to make a decision that the other has.
Well, that's why I thought I should really get it on the agenda to discuss. And actually, we did also talk about the fact that maybe there is a big conflict with elected officials being on the board, and perhaps, say, a county administrator or that-
City manager.
Could city manager would be in that spot.
No.
It's a very fluid process for them right now.
The board, is that for each county, or is the board for Wexford and Manistee?
All of them, together.
The whole thing counted, boom.
So, somebody's gonna get left out of a board seat, for sure, even if they wanna pay the five thousand.
So somebody's going to get left out of a board seat, for sure, even if they want to pay the $5,000.
You know, at this point, our contract with the ES ends the 31st of December, anyway. As council, should we continue on the board, or put an agenda item on, on a regular session to revoke the appointment?
I, I think that, I almost want to see, wait and see what happens when they reduce the board. Because we do have some kind of feedback coming from-
Right, and everything that I've told you tonight was with the blessing of the board.
Yeah. So if it, if it looks like we're going to lose that seat anyways.
We may be without it within 30 days anyhow, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to stay on until the board changes its complexion, because it's going to.
It'd be nice to have firsthand information on what's actually going on.
Well, the things that I've talked about, the things that I've talked about, they said I could talk about, and that was mostly what we talked about today, anyway.
Whose approval did you get, the executive or the actual board?
The president of the board. And everybody was in the room at the same time.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other issues, city manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Nothing.
City clerk? Planning, zoning director? Public safety director? Chief financial officer?
Nothing.
Public works director?
Attorney general.
City engineer?
Nothing.
I just want to thank Mr. Saylor again for a lot of hard work and, in a very fluid situation, tried to keep up with everything. Thanks.
Yes.
I can? Do. I would ask the council for 50 bucks a person, for Christmas, for one family. I don't know them, I've heard of the family. Kids, kids are going through a really rough time. The family's desecrated. I would ask that each council member give you 50 bucks. I'll give it to a private person. The council don't know who they are, they don't want the councils doing this. Give a kid a Christmas.
How many, how many kids?
There's two. That's what I'm asking for. This is just, nobody knows who they are, I don't know the kids, I just know that there's a need.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Thanks.
I just wanted to see how we're doing on the, the leaf pickup. Is that still going?
We're doing extremely well. Yeah, it continues on through this week and through the end of next week.
And is that cart thing that I've seen going on, is that something new that we're doing this year? Where it pushes, I mean, I don't know the exact-
No, we've been, well, we've been doing that for years, and what we do is, is just try to consolidate the piles.
Right.
So we've got that machine out in advance of the crews. It consolidates them, and then it makes the crews more efficient picking them up and loading them.
I guess I've never seen it before, that's why I was like, so what is that?
So this weekend, get out and rate.
It's already out there.
You'll throw your shorts.
Yeah, that's what I was doing this weekend.
And don't forget the slaybell weekend this, this weekend.
Yeah, we have an eventful weekend this weekend. And then, just wanted to note, good speed, and I might be a little late next, next Tuesday. Our kids are doing a Christmas program, so we don't know when it's going to end.
Slaybell weekend coming up. Everybody get out there and have a good time, look forward to seeing you. The, Chip, good, good idea. If, if you, if people are able, let's get some money into him by the next meeting, so there's plenty of opportunity to take care of that. This is the season for giving and caring for other people, so appreciate you bringing that opportunity to us. Thanks to everybody for your indulgence for a long night. Motion to adjourn?